Good evening. And welcome to the Monday, April 8th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Trustee Howell.
Present.
Trustee Lee.
Present.
Mayor Luisey.
Present. And I see we have no appointments this evening. And we also will have no presentations this evening. So that will bring us to our first public hearing, which is the, which we've had this public hearing open, and is the public hearing to consider adoption of the Marbledale Road Design Guidelines as an amendment to the village comprehensive plan. Do I have a motion to keep this public hearing open?
So moved, sorry.
Second.
In favor?
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. And if I just may add, we just want to receive more input from people that are vested in the community, residents, developers, architects, people of that nature. We desire your input on what you would like to see for the Marbledale Road coming up in the future. So we will keep that public hearing open because we believe that this is going to be a serious development area once that hotel is up and running. And we want to make sure that future development is going to be responsible and in line with the Tuckahoe, with the village of Tuckahoe. So I'm of the opinion that I will keep this open as long as possible.
Is there anyone in the public who wants to speak on this tonight?
Yes, well, I was, I was going to get to that. So if there is, thank you, if there is anyone in the public that would like to comment, please.
Good evening. Sarah Wood, I live at 50 Lawrence Ave. I'm really happy to hear that you want to keep the public forum open because I've been to a couple of meetings where the forum's been open and turnout has not been so great. So I feel like maybe words not getting out that it's open, but I hear what, I hear you welcoming feedback and I think maybe, one of my questions was how can we, like, what's the next step to figure out a way to kind of bring interested people, like architects and business owners in the area, like you're suggesting, to kind of help, give some input?
I would like to see them, excuse me, come to the meeting and we can address that here at this meeting and then we can carry that discussion further with, again, the responsible parties, member of the board, village attorney, David Burke, and so on and so forth.
Do you have thoughts on how to get better turnout at the meetings?
That's why we're keeping this open, so, you know, I know this comprehensive plan or these revisions are on our website, so again, I encourage people to read those revisions and also be mindful that they are guidelines, but I still think there needs to be more revisions to those guidelines such as, I don't believe that a sound ordinance or anything relating to sound was addressed in those revisions. And that's just, you know, one thing that comes to mind.
I, yeah, I think that maybe this forum isn't, I don't know why, but it seems like a lot of people don't respond, aren't responding to this, maybe it's too formal for some people, but maybe we could have, you know, like a community meeting on this topic at the community center or something like that, that we could advertise separate to the board meetings because I think that that might get people's attention more.
We do have a residence meeting, is it May 15th? So that will be something that absolutely would be open for discussion at that meeting.
Because I think, I mean, I've read the guidelines and maneuvered around the website a fair bit, but it's not, I don't think it's clear unless you, unless you go to that specific board meeting and click on that specific link, you don't, you wouldn't know where to find the guidelines. So I think it's, it's a little buried, like maybe we could bump that up to like a front page, like prior to whatever village meeting, we could bump that up to like a front page link for people to familiarize themselves with before that meeting. But anyway, one of the things that I wanted to ask because I have been followed, I've not lived here that long, it's approaching four years, but when I first moved here, I became aware of the hotel project and the environmental concerns that were being brought up at the time, and so I started coming to board meetings and trying to follow along. And, you know, I, I really did feel like all the board meetings that I came to, everyone was very genuine, Mayor Eklund and the board at the time was genuinely trying to reassure the public that they were keeping up with everything and David Burke and, I mean, everybody seemed to be doing their due diligence, but during the just completed campaign, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
I got so many, like, postcards, mailers at my house, kind of questioning the development and questioning the environmental aspects of the project and sort of questioning the declaration of, I can't remember what it's called, like the declaration that apparently a former mayor got to say it's, it's safe to proceed with the project. And so I feel a little confused just as a resident, like, is it good for the community or not? And is it safe or not? And so I kind of wanted to get your take on that.
Great question. One of the first questions I asked of the Department of Conservation, I believe Kevin Carpenter was, was here, and I believe this is before we even put a, or before they put a shovel in the ground. And it was a simple question, is it better to remediate the site or is it better to leave it alone? His answer was it's better to remediate the site according to the procedures that were outlined by the DEC in conjunction with the Department of Health. Now, that question came from me to Mr. Carpenter simply because I am not an environmental engineer nor do I have any idea of what's involved, you know. So as I, as I said at that meeting, I will have to rely on the lead agency in the state of New York for direction. But with that being said, the village took, still took it upon to hire a independent environmental engineer to oversee the project to make sure that what was proposed and what was being done by the developer was in compliance. In addition to that, the town of Eastchester also hired their own independent environmental engineer to oversee the project.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like I trust in that process, but I'm concerned that you, as our newly elected mayor, seemed to run on a message of that this isn't, this isn't necessarily good for the village and it's not necessarily safe and that past decisions are coming back to haunt us. And so I wanted to kind of give you a chance to clarify if that's where you, where you fall on that.
I think I just explained.
Well, no, I mean, I.
What, are you asking me?
Well, like when you, when the board meetings would happen and residents would come up here and say, like, we're worried about the schools, we're worried about the water, we're worried about Bronxville, the board and Mayor Eklund assured us that everything was being followed to the letter of the DEC mandate. But then when the campaign started, I started getting all of these mixed messages related to the campaign about how a past mayor had made it possible for that project to go forward by changing the zoning, implying that it's a negative for the village and that the past mayor had gotten an environmental pass basically for the project to happen, implying that it's not safe. And so I just wanted to clarify if that's how you actually feel about it.
I'm sorry, I still don't understand your question.
I, I received it at my house.
The campaign, the campaign is over, let's, let's, let's settle that one, okay? So I'm not going to discuss the campaign right now.
Okay.
I'm not going to discuss campaign literature, but I will say this, that what was in that literature was based on actual village board minutes, so let that stand on its own.
That's fine, but your interpretation of it, I'm not saying that you wrote the literature, but I'm just asking if, where you, where you fall on, was the rezoning of Marbledale to allow such things as a hotel beneficial for the village? Do we see this as good?
The rezoning, as, as was adopted by the master plan committee, that was done, again, by a group of people who have much more knowledge and experience than I do in that matter, and they were tasked with that job. So I will absolutely agree with what they proposed or what they adopted in that master plan. And that was also one of the things that we brought out or was brought out in discussion while the hotel was being built, if you will. It was private property, it was a permitted use. I can't change the law. I can't change the zoning of, of, that was already in place at that point in time.
Okay, I just have two other thoughts and then I appreciate your time and your patience with me, but first I would say that I'm a little concerned as a, as a semi-involved resident of the village that the campaign was so heated and, and maybe even things were said that, that aren't even relevant now because we're moving past it. But the whole point of local government is for people to get involved and like, I might consider running one day, but I don't want to have people sending mailers to my neighbors about me and, so I think there's some responsibility to like the campaign and what happened, like it is over, but it lingers. So I'll just say that, it's not really a question. And then my last question is, on November 7th, at the board meeting, we, you, on the agenda was a resolution to declare the Tuckahoe Board as the lead agency for the project, for the Marbledale Road Guideline Project. And it wasn't voted on?
That is correct.
And I was wondering if that resolution is going to come back?
This is still all part of this public hearing that we've kept open.
But I thought the hearing was for the guidelines, would the board being lead agency not be separate? I really don't know how it works. Yeah.
Yeah, I know that was something that.
It's not, I think it really got lost in the shuffle, that was a kind of a weird meeting with a lot of public comment and then I don't think it got brought back in and then it's not in the subsequent meetings? Maybe it was like not during a meeting.
No, it was, I, I know what you're referring to and I, and I remember at that time that one of the things that I jotted down, and there wasn't, I felt that there wasn't enough input from members of the planning and zoning board. And again, this is why, and then if I'm not mistaken, it was one of the subsequent meetings that we had a architect or a builder here.
Yeah.
We had an architect.
Who, who spoke, you know, about issues that weren't, were not even addressed and again, again, my eyes got opened that much wider. So again, that's why I'm a big proponent of keeping this open, there's no need to rush this. We have to get this right.
Yeah.
We have to get this right. Because once this is adopted and development goes forward, we're going to be living with that for generations.
Right. So, yeah, so then back to my first point of, of like, how do we get more people involved? So I think if we can shoot for that May meeting at the community center would be a great.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Thanks for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else would like to comment on the Marbledale Road Guidelines? Not?
Mayor, I wonder if we could do a flyer or something to invite, to, I don't know, encourage people to come out to that community meeting and specifically put out that we'll discuss the Marbledale Road Design Guidelines, just something more than what we're doing now. Because that's a good point and I think maybe think there's a great opportunity.
I guess it would be nice to be able to depend on social medias as that seems to be the way of the world.
I mean, there's, we have social media.
Okay, do we need a roll call to keep this public hearing open?
Andino.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. And the next public hearing is to consider the tentative budget for fiscal year June 1, 2019 through May 31st, 2020. Do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
To open.
Open, I'm sorry. Can't even read my own writing.
So moved.
Thank you.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Okay, next up is the adoption of minutes of the regular board.
Public hearing's open now, I think you may need to take.
How come this isn't on this paper here?
Somebody.
Yeah, I'm done. Okay. Do I have a motion to keep this public hearing, close this public hearing on the?
Now ask people if they have comments.
Oh. Any comments from the public about the upcoming budget? Forgive me, I'm a rookie.
Hello? Greg McGann, 184 Dante. So I'm new to the process, so I just want to understand a few things and then, so, my first topic would be, main topic would be inflation. So with increasing the tax levy, how do you divide out your natural inflation? Is that part of the state cap number? Is that something you take from the federal government?
In regards to the, the tax cap number?
So how, and how do you figure out what the inflation is? Because if you have a tax levy of 3.4%, you need to make up, part of that's inflation. So I, within that budget that I saw, I don't really see how you divide that out.
I, I, in regards to the, the assessed value, so the assessed value will change or won't change depending on what property it is, so obviously that assessed value is the piece of the pie that divide the levy from. So if, say if there's a new development or new project that comes on board, obviously that increases your assessed value. So if that what you mean by inflation?
Well, I'm kind of, I'm saying that if inflation in general is 2%, then you would expect a 2% tax levy just to make up for that inflation in real dollar amount. So I was just wondering, do you consider that? And, and would voters be opposed to a 2% raise to make up for inflation? It's not really a tax raise, it's a, getting the same value. So I was just wondering, if you go above, say inflation's 2%, you go above 2% with a levy, now you're talking about real money, real dollars, real value you have to make up. So I was just, do we look at that separately? I mean, as a voter, 2% would not bother me because that's, that's what a dollar costs now.
Right, so when I think it comes, so.
So it's not, yeah, it's not about a property tax assessment.
I guess when the inflation, when we talk about the levy, that there's the set levy and then there's the tax cap that allows us to go either, for the village of Tuckahoe this year, it's 2.2%.
I'm assuming they're tied together somehow in some calculation.
Well, so I think basically that's what the tax cap is, it allows you to go up to 2%, so there's your, there's your inflation built in right there. Not that it's, you know, I'm not, I guess with the tax cap and everything else, I'm not sure if it's, you were talking about inflation, like and prices are increasing at a certain amount?
Yes, yes.
So I think that's where the tax cap comes in and it says that things are going up by 2% a year, therefore you're allowed to raise your taxes by 2%. So I think that's where.
So I was just wondering, so like in past year, it seems the number, the tax levy increase may be less than inflation. So I was just wondering, do we look at that or?
So the tax levy, so the New York State tax cap levy, it's often called the 2% tax levy, obviously it's not 2% every single year, it's tapped out at 2%. There was a couple of years ago, if you remember, it was .12%. So that's where I think the tax cap, New York State builds in, you know, in a, you know, quote unquote inflation amount based on the CPI each year, so that's part of the debt form.
I'm just looking at the budget, I'm trying to divide out that tax cap and then we looked at the levy that's in here, you would go above that, you know, by 1.4 or some percent. So that's the part I'd be worried about, that's, that's a tax increase in my book.
Above the 2%.
Right. So how do voters generally feel about that? I mean, have you, is that a big deal, 1% to, to the voters? So my comment would be, for that amount of money, it's not, it ends up being, what, 150,000, 140,000 maybe, isn't, is that something you really need to go to the public for? Doesn't sound like a lot to take a political hit where, especially since you're paying down debt on low interest communities, I guess. So I'm just wondering, I'm, I don't want to preach, I just want to kind of know how you approach this, that's all.
Yeah, if, if everybody felt your way, if everybody felt the same way you did, we'd have gold-plated streets.
Well, that, I'm not there yet.
But no, I do appreciate it.
I'm starting on it slow.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your thoughts, so absolutely.
But maybe it's about educating the public of what, of how this process goes?
I think this board has to be mindful of the fact of the median income of the residents of this village when it comes to determining what kind of budget we're going to adopt. We also have to be mindful of the fact of the, the essential services that, that people have come to expect and deserve living here in this community. So I mean, that's the task that, that we face every year with the budget. The easiest thing would be, yeah, let's just raise taxes, you know, and we'll just, you know, as Trustee Lang just said, yeah, we'll have gold-plated streets, but that's, that's not responsible management of the village. So thankfully, we get, you know, thanks to our village administrator and our treasury department, we're able to track our revenue and expenditures every month and we know if we're hitting our mark or if we're not hitting our mark based on the budget that we adopted in that previous fiscal year. I don't know if that's answering your question. I mean, there's some things, there are budget drivers that we have no control of, such as healthcare cost and pension cost.
I don't, I don't find a lot of issues with, with the budget and that, that part of it. I was just wondering how we deal with this slight deficit or how we, if we had a surplus, how would we deal with that and would we look ahead?
Well, as.
We'll have to talk about it now, I'm just.
Well, no, I'm just saying to have that kind of surplus, it's good to have in case there is an emergency in one of our, in one of our buildings here in the village, you know, where we might need to, God forbid, replace a roof or something because it collapsed or, you know, something catastrophic like that.
So do we have a real surplus fund? I mean, I don't, I don't see anything about trust or anything like that, do we have any?
Don't mind.
Go ahead, Dave.
There's not going to be, in the budget document, if you have the tentative budget, I don't know if you printed it out, if you're looking at it right now, there's not going to be a surplus fund in there, but what we do have is, is fund balance, right?
Right.
Fund balance, you can find that number in our audit, so that's, that's a different number, it's not built into the tentative budget itself, it's, you know, it's the, you know, quote unquote rainy day fund.
Right.
It's a little over $2 million. You do have, you do have a question of the cash flow.
So that's not left over from this past year, that's just something you try to maintain?
That's an accumulation of every single past year there is, some years are better than others, some years we do return money to the fund balance, some years we have to take it out. But the last, you know, since I've been here, we've, we've put money, we've increased.
That's my last comment, so in this year, would that be something you could use to keep it to the inflation rate for a tax levy increase?
Absolutely. Appropriated fund balances, you know, is a choice that the board has to make, it is something that if you do appropriate fund balance this year, you have to, you're starting off next year in that hole. You're using $100,000 this year, you're already using that $100,000. You just have to find, but it's definitely a long conversation.
So this is all very preliminary, so you really have a.
Right, so we have one more budget work session that the public is invited to on April 27th at 8:30 a.m. for those early risers, unlike me. But, you know, I think you're, to your point, you're right and it's, it's, we're tasked with trying to figure out, you know, maintaining a healthy fund balance, keeping debt down, making sure that employees have a, you know, a wage that's marketable, that they, you know, that we keep people that are good. And also, you know, the thing that I always keep in mind is that the residents don't necessarily get an increase at work. So as we're, you know, increasing every year, maybe if it's a 2% cap, people aren't always getting raises, so it's, it's a tough, it's a tough call sometimes to try to balance it out.
What Sarah was saying, as far as participation, maybe not this budget, but in future, there's a lot of talent in, in these neighborhoods, financial talent, and I was just, more participation would, would help everyone in the future.
Point taken.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, do we, anyone else? Anyone on the board? Okay, now we can close the public. Okay, can I make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Now I can move on to the adoption of minutes, the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of March 11, 2019, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Approval of the minutes of the reorganization meeting of April 1, 2019, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. And at this time, again, anyone would like to address the board on agenda items? Okay, no one coming up, so I'm going to move on to our resolutions. Resolution number one is authorizing the closing of the following capital projects. Project number 2015-0081 Reed Hydraulic Sand and Rear Sander. Project number 2017-0098 DPW Equipment and project number 2018-0104 Police Vehicle, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee. In favor.
Mayor Luisey.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the acceptance and award for the following surplus items advertised through legal notice and available for auctions at Auctions International. And those items include a 2016 Dodge Charger four-door police sedan with the highest bid coming from C. Oliver of Massapequa, New York for the price of $10,700. And we also have sold 18 Motorola radios and the one multi-radio docking station to the highest bid of $430 to A. Cops of Hopewell Junction, New York. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing an addendum of lease between the Village of Tuckahoe and the Eastchester Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce dated May 1, 2014 for a term of lease extension through April 30, 2021. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing a fireworks performance contract with Fireworks by Grucci for a fireworks display on Saturday, July 13, 2019 with funds donated by the Generoso Pope Foundation. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And if anyone out in the public has not seen the fireworks display that is held down at the Parkway Oval, you are missing something very, very spectacular. So please, by all means, please try to make it this year. And once again, thank you to the Generoso Pope Foundation. Resolution number five is authorizing a tax sociarity settlement with Santos and Gladys Realty LLC for assessment years 2016 through 2018 with the street address of 185 Marble Dale Road, Section 39, Block 4, Lot 6A in the amount of $2,423. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number six is authorizing a tax sociarity settlement with Chemex Realty, Inc. for assessment years 2015 through 2018 with the street address of 150 Marble Dale Road, Section 39, Block 3, Lot 7B in the amount of $5,012. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number seven is authorizing a tax sociarity settlement with Campus Family 2000 Trust for assessment year 2018 with the street address of 42 Oak Avenue, Section 32, Block 15, Lot 13, in the amount of $6,121. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number eight, authorizing a tax sociarity settlement with Deep Hole Realty Company, Inc. for assessment years 2015 through 2018 with the street address of 191 Marble Dale Road, Section 39, Block 4, Lot B in the amount of $11,057. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number nine, authorizing a tax sociarity settlement with Medi Ray, Inc. for assessment years 2016 through 2018 with the street address of 150 Marble Dale Road, Section 39, Block 3, Lot 7 in the amount of $12,298. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And if there is a silver lining to all these tax sociarities is that this money is already in place in our current budget for these tax sociarities. And I also would like to point out that most of these bring these properties up to date, which means that our tax sociarity bidders are up to date with the village. So we're not settling huge amounts from years past. Resolution number 10 is setting a public hearing for April 29, 2019 to consider a proposed local law repealing local law number three of 2018 which authorized a, for the year-ending 2020 budget to exceed the New York State tax cap. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And if I may comment on this resolution, this is something that the board does usually early on in the year. And what it does is allow the board to exceed the tax cap that's mandated by the state. And we do that not knowing what we will be facing in our upcoming budget. So it's something that allows us that if we have to, for whatever reason, whether our revenues are not what they are expected or our expenditures exceed our revenues, that we will have that ability to go over the tax cap. And conversely, we have to then repeal that local law as well, and that's what we're doing this evening. Setting a public hearing too, which is what I said right here. So do I, we already? Yes, we did. We're going to do that, yep. So, resolution number 11, setting a public hearing for May 6, 2019 to consider a proposed local law amending Chapter 21 of the Village Code extending prohibited parking on village streets during winter months. Do I have a motion?
Before we do the motion, can we have David explain this again? Or do we do it after?
Yes.
That's it. So, so moved.
Second.
Now we can have a discussion. And I guess the best person to bring up for that would be Chief Costanza.
Have the chief do this. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Evening, Mayor, members of the board.
Good evening.
So, when I had asked the, I sent the memo to the village board requesting that the two sections of the village ordinances get amended as it relates to winter parking. The two sections spell out the dates of December 15th to March 1st. One is for designated streets that have that restriction in place. There's about a half a dozen streets still left in the village that have December 15th to March 1st. And second, on all business streets, there's no parking overnight from 3 a.m. to 6 a.m. It's basically Marble Dale Road and, and metered parking throughout the village. And the reason why I asked for this change is because that law was amended about 20 years ago, I think in the late 90s, when we had some weather patterns that as we got closer to spring, we had mild spring-type weather, and the residents felt it was too restrictive to have that restriction going well into March. The reality is, is that in the past several years, we've got hit pretty hard in the month of March with winter storms. Five this past year, 2018, five in 2017, and several in the years prior to that as well. And when that happens and not having the restrictions in place, there's cars parked where they're normally not during the winter months when we're removing snow. And the village trucks are having difficulty maneuvering around parked cars. Some streets, they can't even make turns because of the plows and the sanders and the length of the vehicles. So it not only creates a hazard for the snowplow operators, and they can't do their job properly, but it also creates a hazard for the motorists because we're not cleaning the streets as well as we should be. So that is the request. The request is to extend the season, so to speak, to its original dates as they were, you know, 20 years ago, and based on the weather patterns. With that being said, what I'm also doing at the same time, at least on the half a dozen streets where the restriction prohibits parking all throughout the winter, is that we will be sending out surveys if this is approved. And, and to all the residents where the streets are affected. And to see if they want to change the restriction to what the majority of our winter regulations is a snow zone. And the snow zone allows parking all winter unless it snows, and then 12 hours up until after the snow stops falling. So probably 90% of the winter months, people are allowed to park in front of their homes because it's not an issue. So there were, again, about six streets that never requested the change. And over the years that, I mean, 25 years ago, it was probably, you know, 75 streets that had the total restriction and were down to six. So I think it's best for the residents if that's the path they want to go down. Some may not. Some may say, you know, our street's too narrow and we feel like, you know, it's not a burden for us to not park all winter long. We'll leave it up to the residents. But that's my suggestion to the board. I would like to see those other sections changed though because, one, in the business districts, the overnight parking is really not creating a burden for most residents because there's usually not a lot of parking overnight in those areas in general. And there's often enough off-street parking in some of our lots to facilitate the capacity that is in front of some of these buildings. So that's my suggestion to the board that we take into account the recent weather patterns, the hazards that are created when the streets are not cleaned properly, and, you know, move forward to make the streets safer.
Thank you, chief.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And resolution number 12 is adopting the designation of Eastchester Rising as the official paper of the Village of Tuckahoe. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And resolution number 13 is ratifying the authorization of a donation of a midweek, two-hour space rental of the Tuckahoe Community Center valued at $150 to the Tuckahoe PTA for this spring social fundraiser. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Howell.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. Resolution number 14 is approving vouchers in the amount of $635,202. $635,026. $635,202.36. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And lastly, resolution number 15 is proclaiming April 29, 2019 as Arbor Day here in the Village of Tuckahoe. And I will get to the, cut to the chase with this and just read the last line of this resolution, which is, "On behalf of the Board of Trustees and all the residents of Tuckahoe, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2019, as Arbor Day in the Village of Tuckahoe and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodland. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to glad in the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Do I have a motion?"
So moved.
Second. Trustee Andino.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Trustee Lee.
In favor.
Mayor Luise.
In favor. And that will bring us to our departmental reports to the board. And Chief Costanzo already gave us thank you. Our recreation attendant is here, John Galuzzi.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
I'm here this evening to remind our listeners and our viewers about our Easter egg hunt, which is coming up Saturday, April 20th, at Parkway Oval Field for ages 1 to 9. The event starts at 11 a.m. promptly, and again, is at Parkway Oval Field. We'll have music, some food vendors, the Easter Bunny, and 15,000 eggs done for. It's all compliments of our sponsor, the Generoso Pope Foundation. At 11 a.m. at morning on the 20th, Mayor Luise will begin a countdown. Then it will be on, the race to grab 15,000 eggs. That's this Saturday, April 20th, at 11 a.m. prompt start time, Parkway Oval Field here in Tuckahoe, the annual Easter egg hunt. The Village Easter egg hunt is brought to you by Mayor Greg Luise and the Village of Tuckahoe, and it's sponsored by the Generoso Pope Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
15,000 eggs? You sure that's enough?
We have to increase it every year. There seems to be a great turnout every year, so massive turnout.
Still hard, still hard to believe. We used to do that in front of Village Hall.
I think with, with about 500 eggs.
I, I don't know. It was controlled chaos, to say the least. Miscellaneous business, as trustee Andino mentioned earlier, the budget work session will be held on April 27th here at Village Hall at 8:30 in the morning. All are welcome to attend. The adoption of the budget will take place on April 29th here at Village Hall at 7 p.m. And the regular, next regular meeting of the village board will take place on May 6th at 7 p.m. And that will bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and I will begin with trustee Andino.
Thank you, Mayor. At last week's meeting, I, I decided that I would oppose a planning board member's appointment to the planning board. And I got a couple of emails and phone calls, people asking me why. And I just felt obligated to, to let the residents know and fellow board members, I did speak to the mayor, about my decision to oppose Antonio Leo's appointment to the planning board. But at first, I'd like to start by thanking all of the volunteers for the village, the elected officials and appointed officials. It's not an easy job sometimes to do this work, and so I appreciate the time and effort that people put into it. During last year's election, I'm two years ago, rather, when I ran, Antonio Leo put out a letter that was unbecoming, to say the least, of an elected official. And that year, I decided that, you know, we would move forward, and as Mayor Luise said, you want to move forward from campaign season. You don't want to stay in it, and you want to move forward and not dwell on the negative things that happened during campaign season. But to one of the residents' points, it does linger. And this year, I felt that Mr. Leo continued in the same vein in that he engaged in discourse on social media that was distasteful and unacceptable, to me at least, in that he told someone to go crawl under a rock. Some may feel that that's not out of line, but I do. Mr. Leo represents this board, and more importantly, he represents the residents of Tuckahoe, and I can't condone such behavior. Anyone sitting on this board as elected officials or on a board or committee where you're representing the residents of the village must know how to conduct themselves with dignity and respect for others. And so that's the reason for my decision, and I wanted to make that public. On a more positive note, I'd like to thank the chief and the police department for our raising awareness for Autism Month. There, I don't know if you guys have seen on the patrol cars, they have the little, the magnets. This is the work that I've done for 30 years of my life, and so when I saw that, it made my heart smile. And I appreciate the fact that we are bringing awareness to the challenges that people are dealing with, with developmental disabilities and autism. And I appreciate the effort, chief. Thank you. Also, I wanted to give you an update. We've been pushing to get Main Street paving work done. You guys have probably heard this before. Um I spoke to some people at the um, at the county and also been pushing Damon Marr's office to get some help and I did get a response that the work was moved from last, from next year, twenty-twenty to twenty-nineteen again. So keep your fingers crossed. We'll keep pushing and trying to get the paving work done. They're saying between four to six months, it'll get done, so we'll keep you updated on that. Um okay, and the library report, as I say every month, we have a robust program at the library. Please go on to the website. Library Week is April seventh through the thirteenth. Um so please get out to the library and, you know, there are classes there for children, for adults, for teens. I'd like to just point out a couple of important, there's tax help that AARP is um, is offering on Fridays this month. So I would encourage that, I would encourage seniors and the like to get out. I know they've had lines waiting before people even can get in. Uh there's also tech help for people who might need some tech help if you need some help with your computer or you need to learn um any, I don't know if it's, oh, it's just using your computer or any device, they, they offer you some tech help. And then the other events that you can find, you can go online at tuckaholibrary.org. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Andino. And I'd just like to thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, my son and I had the privilege of uh, of attending um the Shiloh's presentation of the Gospel Train. So we didn't know what to expect. We kind of figured there'd be a whole lot of singing. Instead, we were introduced to a train full of these wonderfully overdressed ladies with fancy hats and not very nice things to say about one another. But in the end, amid all the name-calling and huffing and puffing, the message was quite clear. You don't want to be on that train. You want to be on that train till the last stop. I'd like to congratulate the ladies of Shiloh for a well-attended and wonderfully produced event. And also want to congratulate their honorary and of the day, Trustee Moore for his dedicated service award. So thank you, Shiloh, and see you at your next event. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Trustee Lang. Trustee Howell.
Thank you. Um first, for the Planning Board, it looks like we're going to have an opening on the Planning Board and we've also been counseled to create um another ad hoc position for the Planning Board. So we'd like there to be a period where we solicit and accept applications for those who are interested in it. Over the next few weeks, you can send those applications or a statement of experience and why you want to be on the Planning Board to David Burke. And um will, those candidates will be interviewed by the Board and selected and brought forward for a vote. I also wanted to let folks know about two events in May. One will be the Chamber of Commerce. On May eleventh, they're going to hold a fitness fest at the Tuckahoe Community Center. They're accepting applications from local businesses who'd like to participate in that. If you can have those in by May first. Uh information is on their website and we want to encourage everyone in the village to attend that and see what the Chamber has done. Uh also, on May twenty-sixth, there'll be a Memorial Day service that will be put on by the East Chester Tuckahoe Veterans Ceremony Committee. It'll be held at seven PM in the East Chester High School Auditorium. This will be a tribute to the Greatest Generation and it will commemorate the seventy-fifth anniversary of the D-Day Invasion of Normandy, Battle of the Bulge, and Iwo Jima. East Chester High School um will feature a swing band with singers under the direction of Mark Dodge, so it looks like a pretty engaging evening. And uh the committee is also looking for anyone who has information on local citizens or history of local citizens who have participated in any of those battles. You can reach out to any of the trustees here. We can get that information to Vito Pinto. Another thing that we're going to start planning is on April twenty-second, there'll be a meeting at the Community Center at six-thirty for our first planning meeting for the Tuckahoe Challenge. Anybody who's interested in being a volunteer, you will get a nice free shirt for volunteering. And then finally, on April twenty-seventh, we are going to have an art exhibition here at Village Hall. Uh we're going to host a program called New York Her. This exhibit was put together by a French artist named Louisa L. to inspire young women during Women's History Month. And um in this exhibit, Louisa L. painted portraits of ten women uh who are changing the shape of the world, uh who also happen to be immigrants. And part of the exhibit includes an interactive phone app which you can point at the portraits and a video will pop up and tell you something about the subject of the portrait. Um one of those individuals is our own Omira Andino. So um we're very proud to be able to feature this exhibit. And we've scheduled it for three to six PM on that date and we're hoping people will come, view some art, and go out and have a great dinner at one of our many great restaurants in Tuckahoe. That's it.
Thank you, Trustee Howell. Trustee Lee.
Mayor.
You're welcome.
I've had the pleasure of meeting with our senior citizens weekly. I would like to announce that they are having their Senior Citizen yearly, annual Easter luncheon on Tuesday, April sixteenth at noon with live music. The lunch will be held at Father Fata Hall. The center will be closed April eighteenth for Holy Thursday. The Tuckahoe senior members enjoy a wide range of activities and meet every Tuesday and Thursday at Father Fata Hall. If you or anyone you know is fifty-five and above and would like to join our senior citizens for thirty dollars a year, please check out our website at tuckahoseniors.org. Thank you and have a happy, healthy Easter and Passover.
Thank you. Um I would like to start by echoing what Trustee Andino said and I was terribly remiss at our last meeting to, did I neglected to thank all the volunteers as, as you mentioned, that worked so diligently on the planning, zoning board, and the library board. So please accept my apologies. And um I just want to acknowledge your volunteerism and know that it's greatly appreciated here. Um May eleventh, where, there will be a ceremony held here in front of Village Hall at nine AM. It's the Police Rememberance Ceremony. Please, I encourage everyone to please attend. It's a moving ceremony. And let's just support our, our, our Police Department and then police all over the country as well. So nine AM, May eleventh. I also would like to wish the residents of Tuckahoe a happy Easter and a happy Passover as well. And the one last thing, um something I've been thinking about from when I first became a trustee, I wanted to always um, you know, be available here in the village to the residents because I had the luxury of having a rotating shift schedule and for whatever reason, that never materialized. Well, here it is, eight years later, and now I'm retired. So um, what I'm going to announce tonight is I will make myself available to the residents of Tuckahoe here in Village Hall. And I'm going to begin this Wednesday. And I will be here in the mayor's office from ten o'clock until eleven. If people show up, I'll be here for the balance of the day until we get finished. Please come here and talk to me about anything you want to talk about. You want to just have a cup of coffee with me and talk about the Yankees, that's good too. Um but on, and what we'll do is I, I've asked um, I've asked David that if this becomes a regular, then it will, of course, then be posted on our website. I also am aware that not everyone can come on a particular day. So if you're only available on the weekend, I can also then make myself available as well. But um it will begin this Wednesday. I will be here in Village Hall from ten o'clock on. And I will be more than happy to have a cup of coffee with you or a cup of water. Something along those lines. And that will bring us to the second opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board. Good evening. Aren't you on the wrong side?
Tom Rudiano, Seventy-two Highview Avenue. Honorable Mayor Luisey, esteemed trustees and trusted advisors. I am here on my own behalf and also on behalf of our former mayor, Eklund, who intended to come this evening and last week, couldn't make it. Uh had a, he had a personal emergency this evening. So um, a couple of things we wanted to share. One was um, and first and foremost is welcome and congratulations, uh Trustee Howell and Trustee Lee. Um it's nice to see some new faces on the board as well as some old ones. And I use the term loosely when I say old.
Please.
Feels a little funny to be on this side of the dais, but I have to say it was nice to get here a little late. Not wear a tie, have dinner with my family. So um thank you all for affording me the opportunity to do that again. Wanted to just say that I expect and looking forward to great things from this administration. Um and also on behalf of the mayor, former mayor, and myself to say that we lend our support in any way that we can in the years ahead as you move forward and continue to do great things for our community. So that's all.
Thank you, Tom. You got that, got that glow. You got that glow.
You do too. I see you.
Wow, that's the lights.
I don't know. You certainly have taken on the mantle of, of mayorhood.
Well, I, I'm, again, as I said last week, I'm so honored to be here with, with these trustees. It's.
Great. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Gina Polano, one forty Oakland Avenue. Members of the Board, administrators. Um I'm standing here before you as a representative of my neighborhood, Oakland Avenue. The stretch of Benedict Avenue to Lincoln Avenue. It's not a long stretch, but it is one that has not been paved in many, many, many years. I've lived there personally myself for thirty-four years. Um I can't remember the last time that it was paved. We have several potholes, all kinds of holes. It's been patched numerous times. Um neighbors talk about it. Um I'm standing here before you asking, what do we need to do? I've spoken to Mr. DiMarco, I've spoken to Mr. Burke, sent letters, asked for people to look at it. And that's all been done. I have to say it has definitely been done. But we still haven't gotten the paving. We haven't gotten any idea of when this could happen. So I'm asking you, what do we need to do? Do I need to get a petition together of all my neighbors? I can do that. They're all happy to do that. But it's, everywhere around us has been paved just recently, last spring. And when I spoke to someone last spring, it was like, well, it's too late now, but in the fall, it'll be done. Then the fall came and went and now it's springtime again. And I know you're facing the same challenges of trying to get a village road paved, but um, Oakland Avenue especially there is a very big commuter uh street. People use it as a cut-through to go to um the Bronx River Parkway. There's tons of people, pedestrians going to the Metro North Crestwood Station. There's young kids, there's um, there's strollers. It needs to be paved. It's been a very, very long time. So just wondering, how do we get it on the docket to be looked at, to be paved?
Well, without, with um Superintendent DiMarco's not here right now, but what I do know is uh what he does on an annual basis is that he will assess the streets of the village and I believe there's a a rating of one to five. So um I guess five being the worst, let's, for argument's sake, and depending on what designation Oakland has been given, that will determine then when that street will be paved. I hope that they are at least doing spot pavings of, or filling the potholes. I believe that's what the department's undertaking right now, now that the weather's gotten a little bit better. But that is something that I would have to take up with Frank to find out exactly uh what is the level of the severity of the need for that to be paved right now. Because again, getting back to the budget, there's only so much money that we have and.
Oh, I understand. I totally understand. But you have to remember, there's this section just a few feet away, totally done, going all the way to Leewood. I understand that's East Chester. I get that. But then going down past the stop sign is Tuckahoe. And that section on has been paved. There's many, many streets that have been paved and repaved, like I said, in thirty-four years. I can't even remember the last time.
Sometimes if you, if you've seen a street repaved from curb to curb, and I'm not saying this is the case, but it could be that Con Edison or the water company may have.
Oh, I understand. We had plenty of that on our street.
Okay, so I'm just saying,
Right.
You know, that could be the case and why those streets are paved. Again, it's something I, I'm going to have to speak to Frank about to find out exactly where you are on the map.
But I would appreciate someone getting back to me and saying, what do we need to do to have this really looked at? Because I've heard that time and time again and um I can't believe that from year to year, and this has been going on for many years, and it's not just me, other people have, have spoken about it, is that it doesn't change. Because every year, we're getting more and more, Con Ed was on our street several times. We've had more patches, we've had more holes, bad winters. And yes, I think that was going to be a stopgap measure where someone was going to come in and put a little tar down and that happens. But within a few weeks, that gets all pulled up with the weather, understandably. But as far as doing that small section, um I was told the machines were, were there, then they were gone. They were going to be coming back in the fall. By October, it was going to be looked at and done. So basically, that's what it is. If I need to get a petition, I'd be happy to, but just appreciate the Board's looking at it and um giving us.
If you would just leave your number with, with the clerk and I will get back to you.
Absolutely.
And David, do you have any info on this, by any chance?
Just to go off what Mayor Luisey said, it is a rating system. So we do, and I, Mm-hmm. We've talked. It is a rating system where we do look at each street and kind of adjust to that. Um then we take out how much money that we have in the budget and try to figure out what we can get paved. It is definitely a balancing act. Um we try to do the right thing, the, the worse roads, um you know, the most commuted roads and things like that. We, you know, it's an assessment that, you know, we try to do our best to try to make it fair to everyone. Obviously, we have your information down. What we'll do is, what we'll do is figure out how much money that we have. How many roads, we'll estimate how many roads we can get done. We bring that to the Board and kind of get their input on that. So it is definitely something that, you know, in the coming months that we can do.
Okay. I mean, speed signs have been put up. It is a major, the number of cars has increased tremendously since um many years ago. So there are speed signs there. People are going, the roads are not good. There's lots more kids moving into the area. So, you know, we want to keep it, it's not just for studies, it's for also keeping um our roads safe. Yeah. And for people, pedestrians as well as drivers. Okay? I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? And I neglected anyone. David, anything for us?
One thing real quick is that you'll see some work in our Crestwood section coming up from Metro North beginning Wednesday, the seventeenth. Uh I don't use the station, obviously, I work here, but a lot of people that do use it, I think the overpass, there has been work in the overpass. So they've started that work already. But on the seventeenth, you'll see them actually taking a portion of the street where Crestwood's taxi is parked right now. That's going to be a construction area. Um they're going to have a temporary walkway kind of going over. So that's all going to be starting next week. So they promised a press release for today. I have not seen that as of yet. But I want to get that up and I want to get the picture up on the website as soon as possible because I think people really kind of visualize how good it's really going to look. I don't know if anyone's ever been to any of the other stations throughout Westchester County that they've done, but I think they really do, they do a nice job.
Which other ones have they?
Um I know they've done, I think they're working on um White Plains right now and they've done Port Esther if you're up there and I, you know, I live in that area. I think they did a fantastic job.
And does Crestwood Taxi know about this?
They do know about it. Yep.
Okay, good.
Yep. I've talked to them and we're temporarily going to move them to another area.
Is there a timeframe, David?
Uh so they actually want to start the seventeenth and they want to be completed by the fourth quarter of two thousand nineteen. Um so they have a very aggressive schedule and MTA really seems to want to keep to that. I've met with, um, we've all met with the, the.
I've met with, we've all met with the contractor a couple of times already. So I think they want to move this along. So just so everyone knows, beginning Wednesday, April seventeenth, they'll be demolishing and installing a new ADA ramp. So what's going to happen is they're having a brand-new canopy over the Crestwood Station. It's called a kiss-and-ride canopy, that's what they call it. So when you walk up to Crestwood, it's going to be a lot more open. Going to be able to walk, steps will go up right there. They'll have free Wi-Fi for anyone who wants to sit down there and do that. LED lighting, brand-new landscaping, one of those display plazas kind of with the information right on there. So, and some artwork, I told you about that last year. The artist looks to be really good. Again, coming from Port Chester, the artwork that they put on there really tied in. I'm really excited about the artwork, what's going to go on there because you're going to kind of walk up to it, and it'll have the artwork on the handicap ramp and things like that. So I think it's going to, you know, I think it's really going to be a good thing for the Crestwood section right there, it's going to look really good. So you'll start seeing that on the seventeenth, and hopefully done, and, you know, by the end of the year.
And to their credit, they didn't interfere with any permit parking on the Yonka side, our, our side, if I'm not mistaken.
So they haven't interfered with any of the parking. However, the contractors asked us to help them find parking, which we're going to do. We're going to try to help them out. They're going to do some work for us down there. If you recall that we had a traffic signal that we were trying to get done at one point in regards to the Crestwood project. That could never get done, it was just cost prohibitive at that time. We've done some things to kind of piecemeal that project, to get, to do that project kind of in-house at some point. And they're actually going to do, assist us with some of that work. Kind of trade off with some of the parking issues. We can kind of help them in the periphery, have some parking issues. We are working with them to try to get some stuff done. So say bye-bye.
Great, thank you, David. Camille? You're good. Well, with that being no further business, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Until next time, Tuckahoe, have a good evening.